This meeting has been four years. I listen to this.
I know.
I don't know how to act.
We're recording.
We're recording, okay.
Okay, so just to catch everybody up, we are now recording the session, although is Zoom back up or no?
I just kind of know my computer gave a notice that I can't connect.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, mine too.
So we are now audio recording the meeting. At this point, we are at Agenda Item 12, Other Business Board Member and Superintendent Update, Item B for your request, Dr. Johnson.
This evening, we have five Freedom of Information Act requests. When Internet is working or Wi-Fi, they are available on the public domain of Board Docs and will be available on the School District's U-46 website later this week.
Okay, moving on to Consent Agenda, Dr. Johnson.
On the Consent Agenda this evening, we have Personal Report and Workers' Compensation Cases, Termination of Mary Hart J. Secretary Middle School, Bid for Plan Operations: Elgin High School Pool Upgrade and Bleacher Replacement Project Number 247, Proposal Plan Operations: Streamwood High School Auditorium Smoke Hatch Replacement, Proposal Assessment and Accountability in Student Success School Climate and Culture Training, Proposal Assessment Accountability in Student Success Universal Screening Assessment, Proposal Assessment Accountability in Student Success Curriculum Associates Professional Learning, Contract Renewal: Climate and Culture Department Ombudsman Educational Services Limited, Contract Renewal: Specialized Student Services Special Education Systems Incorporated, Building Permits Two: Elgin High School Pool Upgrade with Bleacher Replacement Project Number 247, Streamwood High School Picnic Shelter Project Number 24-001. That concludes Consent Agenda.
Okay, are there any items that Board members would like removed from the Consent Agenda? Okay, roll call, or I'm sorry, I need a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan? Oh, regrets. Ms. Khan?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Kerr?
Yes.
President Owens?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, the next item is Discussion Action, Dr. Johnson.
The first item tonight, itemized bills for May 20, 2024. Dr. Frank Williams, Assistant Superintendent of Finance, will respond to questions from the Board of Education regarding the attached bills. Administration recommends the Board of Education approve the list of bills in the amount of $25,595,707.39.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the itemized bills for May 20, 2024?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Khan?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Kerr?
Yes.
President Owens?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, next item?
Next, we have a proposal from the Chief of Staff, Boundary Proposal for New Middle School in Bartlett. Mr. Lindholm, Chief of Chief of Staff, and Mr. Moore, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, will present the attached proposal summary and respond to questions from the Board of Education. Administration recommends the Board of Education vote to accept the boundary change proposal.
Normally, I would ask if you could, you know, run through the proposal again, but none of us have access to it.
Yeah, it it's very consistent actually with what was presented up up front, so it's it would be for the boundary changes to take effect when the new school opens, August of 2025, and we define the elementary schools that would feed in with the adjustment tonight for the Wayne area.
Can I have you read just the the schools that are that are affected into the boundaries, so that we have it on this agenda item?
Of course. So the the proposed attendance area would serve students assigned to the following elementary schools as their home schools, which would be Prairie View, Spring Trail, Sycamore Trails, Wayne, and then a portion of Liberty that's south of Sterns Road, so that one small subdivision.
So I'll need a motion to approve the proposal for the Boundary Proposal for New Middle School in Bartlett.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Thank you for answering all of our questions. I know I asked about numbers and stuff, and you provided those. That was helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Khan?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Kerr?
Yes.
President Owens?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, next item?
Next item, Japanese and Mandarin Chinese World Language Curriculum Expansion Proposal. Mr. Van de Mortel, Coordinator of K-12 Social Studies and World Languages, along with Mr. Brian Tennyson, Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, and Ms. Celia Banks, Director of Curriculum Instruction, are available for questions relating to the Japanese and Mandarin Chinese World Language Curriculum Expansion Proposal.
Can I get a motion to approve the Japanese and Mandarin Chinese World Language Curriculum Expansion Proposal?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Khan?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
President, Ms. Kerr?
Yes.
President Owens?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, next item?
Our next item, Multi-Tiered System and Support and Math-I-Ready Math-K-6 Intervention Resource Proposal. We still have Mr. Tennyson, Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, Ms. Njente, Coordinator of Mathematics, and Ms. Ruzika Stout, Coordinator of Multi-Tiered Systems of Support, who are available for questions relating to the I-Ready Math-K-6 Intervention Resource Proposal.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the Multi-Tiered System of Support and Math-I-Ready Math-K-6 Intervention Resource Proposal?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Khan?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Kerr?
Yes.
President Owens?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, next item?
Next, we have the approval of Board of Education's travel expenses to the Illinois Association of School Boards 2024 Joint Annual Conference.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the Board of Education's travel expenses to the Illinois Association of School Boards 2024 Joint Annual Conference?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Khan?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Kerr?
Yes.
President Owens?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next item?
Next item is the Approval of Closed Session Minutes.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the Closed Session Minutes as detailed on the agenda? Do we normally, I'm sorry, do we normally read those into?
So there will be two separate motions. If you'd like, I'm happy to read them.
Okay.
Can we have a motion for the need for confidentiality still existing as to all or part of the Closed Session Minutes that are listed, and therefore, all the Closed Session Minutes, with the exception of minutes already released, including audio recordings, remain confidential? So those minutes are for September 18th and 25th from 2023, October 2nd and 23rd of 2023, November 6, 13th and 20th, 2023, December 4th, 11th and 18th of 2023, January 20th and 22nd of 2024, and February 5th and 26th of 2024.
So moved.
I apologize, and March 4th, 11th and 18th of 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Khan?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Kerr?
Yes.
President Owens?
Yes.
Motion carried.
May I read the next one? And next, there would be a motion requested that all audio recordings for the following dates, I'll read, more than 18 months old, having been put into writing and approved, may be destroyed. Those minutes would be for April 25, 2022, May 2nd, 9th, and 16th of 2022, June 6th and 20th of 2022, July 18th of 2022, August 8th and 22nd of 2022, September 12th and 26th of 2022, October 3rd and 24th of 2022, and November 7th of 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Khan?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Kerr?
Yes.
President Owens?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Ms. Olson, for reading that out. Uh, next item?
Next item, the Final 2023-2024 School Calendar. Annually, the Board of Education is required to adopt a final school calendar and submit it to the King County Regional Office of Education. The Final 2023-2024 School Calendar is attached for Board of Education approval.
Can I get a motion for the Final 2023-2024 School Calendar?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Khan?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Kerr?
Yes.
President Owens?
Yes.
Okay, the next section on our agenda is Other Business, Appointment of Illinois Association of School Boards, IASB Governing Board Representative. I did contact Laura Martinez, who is our liaison for the IASB Kishwaki District. She indicated that this position, and there's a memo, if you've read it, that I had attached to this Board Agenda item. The representative that they're looking for is really somebody that would be the point person for information to the Board about IASB matters. I think this is kind of a holdover from when things weren't as publicized on the website and the email chains that, you know, that we now have. So I think everybody, correct me if I'm wrong, is pretty well apprised of the happenings and the offerings of IASB. The other item that this person would be responsible for is the only item that ever comes up for a vote with our Kishwaki Division is officers at the fall meetings. We have a fall meeting and a spring meeting. It would be expected that the representative would go to those fall meetings so that they could register the vote for U-46. My recommendation for this is just is to tag this to a position and make that our practice so that we don't have this situation every year where we're trying to figure out, you know, what the responsibilities are and who would who would who would fulfill that. It would be logical to have that tied to an officer. I would I would probably suggest the Vice President, but I'm open to other suggestions. I just think we need consensus on how we go forward with doing this.
You know, in principle, that sounds good. I would love to have, just a potential backup, because sometimes I just can't attend those Kishwaki things due to
Right.
like kid stuff or other job requirements. So I don't mind being, making the Vice President that that point person with the ability to say, hey, you know, Board Member Janie,
Right.
can you go that night and vote for us?
Yeah, and I think at that point, then, that if we make it practice that, it's it's, you know, typically, the Vice President, if the Vice President is unavailable, then at the Board President's discretion to who who to appoint for that meeting.
Yeah, that sounds good to me.
Does that make sense? Okay.
Do they, I'm just trying to remember, do we vote every year or every other year for the IS, for our division?
Laura said every year.
Every year. Do we? Okay.
I wasn't at the fall meeting, so I don't.
No, I looked at the minutes, and we did this the last three years. So it was Sue last year, two years, and then it was Kate the year before. We did it as a formality.
This isn't the delegate for the for the
No, it's in the minutes for this exact thing.
Okay, okay.
And it's always at that same main meeting.
Yeah. So if we could record that into our practice, that that's how we'll move forward with this?
Vice President, generally, with a backup if needed.
Right. Good. All right. Next item on the agenda is Other Business, Dr. Johnson.
We have the Secondary Schools Financial Report for the third quarter. Coming forward, Dr. Frank Williams, Assistant Superintendent of Finance, will review the attached Secondary Schools Quarterly Financial Report and will respond to questions from the Board of Education.
Okay, good evening. The third quarter, Secondary Schools Activity Accounts saw an overall decrease of about $153,000, or about 4%. The largest impact on both the middle and high schools was the class rotation. As students start the second semester in art and the culinary classes and STEM and science classes, the need to refresh the consumables arise. Additional common expenditures impacting the high school, where athletics, as winter time sees a lot of tournaments, especially when it comes to basketball. With these expenses and others considered, all the activity funds ended the quarter with about $3.76 million balance, which is about $30,000 less than we were at this time last year. So it's pretty pretty good, about $3.7 million this time last year and this time this year. And with that, I'll ask, take any questions?
Board members have any questions?
I just want to thank you for adding information about each school and what money is, where their money is going and coming from.
Thank you. We've been working hard on on the reports and adding some of those type of things. I appreciate that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good. Next item on the agenda is Work Session Resolutions.
Our first resolution is for the disposal of surplus personal property, property to be sold. Dr. Anne Williams, Deputy Superintendent of Operations, and Ms. Murphy, Director of Transportation, will review the attached resolution and will respond to questions from the Board of Education. Administration recommends the Board of Education approve the resolution for the disposal of surplus personal property.
Given that we cannot see, could you just give a quick rundown of what the the property is that we're talking about?
Absolutely. We have three cars that were our access equipment in transportation, and we are going to be donating those to the high school auto programs, again, like we did last year.
Good. Board members have any questions? Ms. Murphy, do you want to mention the memo?
Absolutely. We also have a school bus that was put into surplus last June, and we've actually received a request for this vehicle to be donated to the United States Veteran Reserve Corps. So they are going to be utilizing the bus to transport either groups of of Army members or military members, or even using it to transport individuals in times of crisis. So we're very excited to have that working school bus to be able to donate, and we're going to work on getting that completed this week and delivery.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have the resolution for the disposal of surplus personal property, property to be donated, and we have Mr. Lindholm, Chief of Staff, and Mr. Bosch, Director of School Safety, to review the attached resolution and respond to questions from the Board of Education. Administration recommends the Board of Education approve the resolution for the disposal of surplus personal property.
And again, if you could just give a quick rundown of what that property is?
Yes, we're in the process of replacing our radios at all our elementary school networks. So we have radios at the end of life, approximately 200 radios. So we've been reaching out to other districts who may need them and donate to them. We have one district that interested in taking over some of our radios. Otherwise, we would need to dispose of them.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is Work Session Bids and Proposals.
Our first item is a bid for Information Services, Meraki MR Enterprise licenses for wireless access points. Mr. Wolf, Director of Information Services, will present the attached proposal and respond to questions, or talk about the attached proposal, and respond to questions from the Board of Education. Administration recommends award to the lowest responsible bidder Sentinel Technologies Incorporated in the amount of $1,080,769.78 and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. This expenditure will be charged to the Education Fund. The cost is included in the budget for the 2023-2024 fiscal year.
And we've all read these these proposals prior to the meeting, so I don't want to drag the meeting out just because we don't have electricity or Internet, but if you could just give, like, for, just a one-two sentence summary of what the proposal is?
So the proposal is for the licensing, like it says, for our wireless access points. The access points themselves are the hardware, and current business models are, they sell us the hardware, and then they also charge us for licensing, so they can continue to get revenue from us. Everyone does it this way. All of all of the different vendors sell the hardware and the license separately. Our current licenses are expiring, and we, in order to be able to use it so that our students can access the Internet from the classrooms, we just need to renew it so that we still have that. Obviously, they can't do it right now because Comcast is down, but but when when our ISP is up, they do help our students connect to the Internet. Sorry.
Fair enough. Board members have any questions? Ms. Kerr?
Yes, as I recall, this was for a five-year contract. Does that sound right?
The current, yes.
So it's a million dollars, but is that divided by five?
It's divided by five.
So 200,000 a year? Okay, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
And Noel, thank you for also joining us at the day of today.
Next item?
Next item, we have a bid from the Office of Schools Elementary Supply Kits. Dr. Acevedo, Assistant Superintendent of Schools, will will talk about the attached proposal summary and respond to questions from the Board of Education. Administration recommends award to the lowest responsible bidder Educational Products Incorporated in the amount of $894,925.33 and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. This expenditure will be charged to the Education Fund and reimbursed with funds from the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Grant. The cost is included in the budget for the 2024-2025 fiscal year.
And just to clarify, these are elementary supply kits for all elementary students in the district, correct? That is correct. Do Board members have any questions, Ms. Dawn?
Sorry, I don't know why that was funny. Please call me Ms. Dawn. I'm so tired at this point. No, it's okay. If I am remembering correctly, we are using Essar funds one more year to pay for these kits.
That is correct.
Do we, is this the last year that we have those funds available?
That is correct.
Okay, so moving forward, we would need to look at budgeting and big picture.
If we wanted to continue, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you.
Our next item is a bid from Plan Operations Annual Backflow Inspection and Testing. Ms. Waldo, Director of Plan Operations, will share the attached proposal and respond to questions from the Board of Education. Administration recommends award to the lowest responsible bidder JOS Services Incorporated in the amount of $42,282 and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. This expenditure will be charged to the Operations and Maintenance Fund. The cost is included in the budget for the 2024-2025 through 2026-2027 fiscal years.
Ms. Waldo, if you could just give, again, like a one-two sentence summary of the proposal?
Yeah, absolutely. So this is for our annual backflow inspection. This is required by plumbing code, and this happens every summer at all of our sites to make sure that our backflow devices are operating appropriately.
Any questions?
Just, so this is all of our schools?
This is all of our schools.
And maybe even non-schools?
Yeah, absolutely. Anywhere where there's that possibility that there could be backflow.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Next item?
Continuing, we have another bid from Plan Operations Outsource Custodial Facility Management. Administration recommends award to the lowest responsible bidder HES Facilities Management in the amount of $19,942,512.61 and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. This expenditure will be charged to the Operations and Maintenance Fund. The cost is included in the budget for the 2024-2025 through 2026-2027 fiscal years.
And again, if you could give just a quick summary?
So this is for basically our contracted custodial cleaning services. HES is a new vendor that we're excited to partner with. This is for a three-year contract, and this is for the entire portfolio of buildings. So our elementaries and secondaries and our auxiliary buildings will be cleaned by the same company.
Any questions? Thank you.
Next, we have a proposal for Financial Operations Skyward Enterprise Resource Planning Software. Dr. Frank Williams, Assistant Superintendent of Finance, and Mr. Moore, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, will discuss the attached proposal summary and respond to questions from the Board of Education. Administration recommends approval of the proposal from Skyward in the amount of $2,369,860 and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. This expenditure will be charged to the Education Fund. The cost is included in the budget for the 2024-2025 through 2029-2030 fiscal years.
Yes, okay.
Okay, so Dr. Williams and Mr. Moore, if you could give, again, just a very quick summary?
So currently, we have three separate systems that help track time, help run payroll, and help do our finances, and this will put the ball into one. One great system that is education-specific and does have a good focus in the state of Illinois. So that's why we're coming forward.
And there is a significant cost savings by combining?
That's right. For the current school year, the three packages plus the consultant that we have to use to make them work is $717,000. The savings over time, well, the Skyward by itself, once it's, once it's implemented, will be under $200,000 a year. There's a high cost in the first year for implementation. There's also a question that came up about when do the legacy systems go away? You just approved a one-year renewal for Munis, for example, in March. It's good through next March, so there will be a need to be another short-term approval to get us to June 30 of '25, but then all three systems will go offline.
Is that the only contract that we will have to to renew for a shorter, because we just renewed Workforce 2, like, back in February?
Yes, we'll have to renew all of them to get to June 30, because we won't run payroll with the new system until July 1.
Okay, so all of them will, and we're able to do those short-term renewals with all of them?
Oh, sure.
Okay, okay. Board members have any other questions?
Just one. How long will it take us to convert these three systems?
So the plan is one year. So as soon as, as soon as we get the approval, the project will kick off, and we should be ready to go by July 1 of 2025.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we have a proposal from Plan Operations Lincoln Elementary School Counter-Tap Replacement. Ms. Waldo, Director of Plan Operations, will present the attached proposal summary and respond to questions from the Board of Education. Administration recommends approval of the proposal from Warehouse Direct in the amount of $28,000 and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. This expenditure will be charged to the Operations and Maintenance Fund. The cost is included in the budget for the 2023-2024 fiscal year.
This is probably pretty self-explanatory. Is there anything else that wasn't in the description that we should know?
Just that we're going to be doing the countertops in four girls and four boys bathrooms at Lincoln.
Any questions? Thank you. Okay, next Agenda item, Work Session Contracts Over $25,000.
Our first item is a contract for Culture and Climate Crisis Prevention Institute Training and Materials. Dr. Acevedo, Assistant Superintendent of Schools, and Mr. Gennella, Coordinator of Culture and Climate, will present the attached proposal and respond to questions from the Board of Education. Administration recommends approval of the contract with Crisis Prevention Institute in the amount of $654,332 and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. This expenditure will be charged to IDEA/CEIS funds. The cost is included in the budget for the 2023-2024 fiscal year.
And again, just a real quick summary of the proposal?
Sure, this is a proposal for training administrators, for most part, assistant principals of culture and climate and de-escalating student behavior, and training assistant principals to train their staff in their respective buildings in August.
Any questions? Thank you.
Our next item is a contract renewal for Human Resources Jelly Vision. Mr. Moore, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, will present the attached proposal summary and respond to questions from the summary and respond to questions from the Board of Education. Administration recommends approval of the three-year contract renewal with Jelly Vision Lab Incorporated in the total amount of $230,096, and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. This expenditure will be charged to the education fund and Operations and Maintenance Fund allocated as a percentage of enrollments in the health plan. The cost is included in the budget for the 2024-2025 through 2026-2027 fiscal years.
Okay, and I've just been handed the hard copies of the proposal, but since we can't share them with everybody, could you give just another one-sentence rundown?
The naming is strange, but the company called Jelly Vision produces a product called Alex, which is an online benefits selection tool. They take the information about our health, dental, vision, I think, life insurance plans, and help employees guide towards which one is best for their own situation. With over 4,000 benefits eligible employees, our four benefits people could not even imagine how to meet with every single person to help them make choices, or even 1% of every single person. So Alex has been very successful in the last few years. This is a renewal. This year, there were over 1,100 uses of the system just during open enrollment, and will continue to emphasize its use.
Board members have any questions? Thank you.
Our next item is a contract renewal, Information Services, Securely. Mr. Wolf, Director of Information Services, will present the attached proposal and respond to questions from the Board of Education. Administration recommends approval of the contract renewal with Securely for five years in the amount of $764,750, and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. This expenditure will be charged to the education fund. The cost is included in the budget for the 2024-2025 through 2028-2029 fiscal years.
And again, just a one, one-sentence summary?
This is our web filtering for students. It also provides cyberbully monitoring, and it also provides self-harm alerts. So we get notified, the police get notified whenever there's a potential threat to one of our students, whether it's to themselves or to others.
Dawn?
Do I have questions on this one? So as a parent, I know that I get emails from Securely. Do we know how often parents are actually accessing the information to see what's going on?
I don't have that data, but I could get that.
I just meant, kind of like, is that something that we track so we know?
Yeah, we definitely track it.
Okay.
But I don't have data on that, but we definitely...
Could get it anyway.
That's fair. But we do have the ability to get data to see how many parents. Parents actually sign up for it individually. They...
Okay.
We have the licensing available, but it's up to the parents to go in and set it up, and just to sign in so they can look at the dashboard.
That makes sense. I've never done it, but I get the emails on it. And then you mentioned that it is also used, is it, it's a filtering tool when the students try to do searches?
Yeah, it filters searches. Basically, what happens is whenever a student goes out to a website, a website's either categorized or it's uncategorized. And the way it was originally set up, and they just, they just fixed it, if you will, about a week ago, is anything that nobody had ever gone to is considered uncategorized, and they would block anything that's uncategorized. Yeah, I know, right?
Again, my little student using it.
So now, now what they've done is they've put in a feature where it, whenever a student gets a page that's uncategorized, they can put in a request. They just click a button.
Okay.
And then it allows them to request it, and then they have a thing called Page Scan where their platform scans to make sure that there's nothing inappropriate on that site, and then it will allow them, and it can take anywhere from five minutes to an hour for it to come back with a positive or negative result. And if it's a negative result, it could be a couple of things. It either is blocked because we're blocking it.
Right.
Or it's blocked because we've been asked to block it by another entity within the district.
Okay, so students, so, and I ask about that because I've, we've run into issues on our house where dot orgs, national government, like, things are blocked that you wouldn't expect it. So now the students have access to submit little requests, basically asking for something to not be submitted. As a parent, and other parents, I'm sure, see it, are we able to then, like, if something is denied, and we're doing this because the kids can't do homework, right, because certain websites are blocked on the Chromebooks, can parents contact IT? Should we have a Securely account so we could submit?
You could, you could put in a Let's Talk. You could reach out to Help Desk. But typically, what we do is, you could also reach out to Curriculum Instruction, because if it's blocked due to, like, curriculum instruction saying, hey, we need you to block this, because we don't, we don't feel that it's appropriate, then we block based on that.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And if I can, we do receive a number of Let's Talks that then we filter appropriately back to IS or through CNI to be able to then research it further and either respond with why it's blocked, or go ahead and unblock the requests that we receive. So we see that quite a bit.
Perfect.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Summary?
I have a question. Does that also filter for YouTube on the Chromebooks?
It, it does. It filters for YouTube, but YouTube, Youtubes can be an anomaly in themselves, because it views, so much of YouTube we allow students to see, and then if you look at the videos are going up, like, I think 18,000 videos go up every day. So it, it does everything it can to block, but sometimes things get through, and once they get through, then they're blocked. So sometimes something can come through the first time, and then it's, like, flagged as this is not appropriate.
Can parents flag it on the Chromebook?
You could flag it for your own home.
Okay.
Yeah, you can definitely flag it that way.
Thank you.
Because I know sometimes, like, something that I might consider appropriate, because I have a, you know, a high schooler, and if you have somebody who's in elementary school, it's like, okay, that's not appropriate, so you can block, you can put additional blocking from your home.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our last item, contract renewal from the Office of the Superintendent for Illinois Association of School Boards, annual dues. Presenting or discussing the proposal and summary, and I will respond to questions. Administration recommends approval of the Illinois Association of School Board annual dues in the amount of $33,240, as submitted by Illinois Association of School Boards, IASB. This expenditure will be charged to the education fund. The cost will be included in the budget for the 2024-2025 fiscal year. And again, these fees allow us to access resources and support in alignment with the work as a school board and part of this association.
Did you want to read the rationale?
Do you want me to read it?
Sure.
IASB continues to offer updated legal resources, print publications, lobbying, and consultations with staff, as well as reduced fee-for-service programs such as executive searches, policy services, in district and regional workshops, and the annual conference.
Any questions? Okay. That being the last item on the agenda, I will call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Khan?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Kerr?
Yes.
President Owens?
Yes.
We're adjourned at 9:40 PM.
Thank you, everyone.